Workshop for December 19. And if there is no objection, we would like to move the legislative report as first on our agenda since we have guests here.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. Well, we're just gonna take a few minutes like we normally do right before session and try to give you a preview of what we think we are going to see. And I will warn you that that is changing about every five minutes as of this afternoon. So I don't, we'll see, we'll see what happens in the next 30 minutes before we're done with our presentation because there's been some recent, very recent breaking developments. So, real quick, we'll, we'll talk just about what happened last year because as you know, nothing in Richmond sort of happens in a vacuum. Obviously, this year actually might be the exception because everyone's starting from scratch in some respects. But it's the last session for Governor McAuliffe. Probably more importantly, it was the last session for Speaker Bill Howell, who had been Speaker for a number of years. He has retired and they had, the House had designated her co- as Speaker designated before they left session. They also had a pretty significant financial shortfall, about $1.5 billion that they had to close. They used a lot of rainy day reserve funds to close that shortfall, which caught the attention of the bond rating agencies. And so, the bond rating agencies put Virginia on the watch list, which made the legislature very cautious. And so, we've seen a little bit of that, and we'll talk about this a little bit later on, in the governor's most recent introduced budget, which came out yesterday. Terry McAuliffe once again tried to expand Medicaid. He tried that every single year of his term. It never worked. Once again, we'll talk about that later on, because the dynamics of that are changing. And as we'll also be talking about, it was a big year for elections with all 100 members of the House and all three statewide positions. So statewide, you should all know this, but just as a recap, in case you were under a rock the last couple of months, which some of us wish we might have been. Lieutenant Governor Ralph Northam won. He beat Ed Gillespie pretty sizably. I think the margin on that was much broader than a lot of people had anticipated or thought. Justin Fairfax beat Jill Vogel. Justin had, this was really his first foray into politics. Jill Vogel is a current sitting state senator, and she will remain the state senator. She did not have to give up her seat to run in this election. And then Mark Herring, who was the current Attorney General, beat John Adams, who, as you might have heard me say, is actually related to the John Adams. So, John Adams unfortunately lost the election for January. Yeah, a long time for him.
A couple of stats about the governor's race. First off, Gillespie did really well compared to every previous governor. The only person that, that beat him was Ralph Northam. He got more votes than McAuliffe, more votes than McDonnell. But as Joel said, there was a pretty, pretty big margin there between Northam and Gillespie. This chart also has that yellow line is the turnout number. So turnout was about 47%, which is pretty high for a gubernatorial race. It is not the highest we've seen ever, but it is a pretty high number nonetheless. This map shows sort of where all those votes came from. So obviously, the, the red are the fairly rural localities. And you'll see the more, the more urban localities are sort of the blue, which is where Northam got most of his votes. Obviously, Northern Virginia turned out very strongly for, for Northam. I think the other surprise is this lightish blue here down in the middle. That's Chesterfield County, which voted for a Democrat for the first time in almost 40 years. So that's a, a big deal. The other sort of interesting thing about this chart is, go back 20 years to the Gilmore gubernatorial race. The top three localities for Republicans were Virginia Beach, Henrico, and Chesterfield. Fast forward to this election, the top three localities for a Republican were Hanover, Bedford, and Augusta. So you go from three suburban localities to three fairly rural localities, mostly with the exception really of Hanover, mostly west of, of 95. This next chart just shows the, the population. These are 2010 numbers, so if we had them updated for 2017, the, the dark blues would be even darker than they are. Just showing that the, the population centers that are continuing to grow are where that Democratic base is coming from. On the House race, this is really the story of the election. And I'm gonna apologize in advance, this chart is now out of date. So this chart shows the House of Delegates last year with a 66, 34 Republican majority. It shows a 51, 49 Republican majority headed into the session. But as of about an hour ago, that is no longer the case. Shelley Simons has defeated David Yancey by a whopping one vote to the court case. The recount court has to certify that result tomorrow morning before it is official. But there is a, a very, a drastic change in the power in the House of Delegates.
I would say that if you ever want to have a civics lesson about the importance of voting, I mean, this is it. This is, every vote counts. This is not just coming down to one election. This is control of the House of Delegates came down to one election, one vote. So that's, that's pretty remarkable.
We are not done with recounts. We have a, a couple others. And, you know, we knew that the Yancey one was gonna be interesting because of how close it was. But the, the last one will also be interesting. So, so first, we had, there were six races that were eligible for recount. In Virginia, we don't have any automatic recounts. If you lose, you have to request the recount. So only four of the losers requested recounts. Dante Tanner and Prince William Fairfax District requested a recount. They found seven votes for Tanner from missed tallies. And so, Delegate Hugo was recertified as the winner by 99 votes last week. Today, they found a number of votes for both Shelley Simons and David Yancey. But at the end of the day, there, there was a net increase for Shelley Simons of 11 votes. And so tomorrow, that recount court will, we expect to certify that result. Right? Our understanding from the press and everything that's been reported is that there were not any challenged ballots throughout the day. And that would have been the grounds for either side to challenge those results in court tomorrow. So that's what we expect to happen. Then also tomorrow, the Richmond, Chesterfield seat of Delegate Leopasi. That recount will happen. He's down by 336 votes. So it's a much larger margin to make up. And then last, but certainly not least, the 28th district, which is Speaker Howell, who's retiring his district. Bob Thomas is up by 82 votes in that district. What is probably more interesting about that race is there was a split precinct in Stafford County between the 28th district and the 88th House district, where a number of voters were assigned in the wrong precinct. There is a lawsuit that has been filed in federal court asking for some, somehow to fix that problem. That hearing isn't until January 5th. So we may not have true resolution on that until then. And, and, you know, there's speculation about whether the court would ask for a special election or, you know, what could happen there. But now that the Democrats have picked up one seat to get to 50-50, you know, if one of these other recount, you know, the Bob Thomas recount goes the other way, they, you know, could look, be looking at an outright majority of 51-49.
So apart from kind of the obviously shift in the House of Delegates and, and the control of how that's all gonna work, the other thing that's happened is obviously a significant loss of institutional knowledge and committee realignment, realignment. This is just House Appropriations Committee. You can see it with all the strike throughs of, of votes who either did not run or lost. And seven of the 22 members of House Appropriations will no longer be on House Appropriations anymore. And so not only do you have that significant loss, but you also have the committee realignment based upon the, the new ratios in the House of Delegates. So that, that's gonna make for some interesting dynamics as new members come on these really critical and important committees that have not sat on these committees before. And another chart, which this is a really interesting one that VPAP put together, that shows kind of the decline in institutional knowledge over the last 20 years. And you can see back in 1998, you kind of have a 30-30, 30s split with a little more emphasis at the, those middle years. But now we've got almost half of the members of the General Assembly have been there for less than five years. Forty-seven of them in the House. And you only have 16 members who have been there for more than 15 years. What sometimes that leads to is the institutional knowledge is now always with the staff and particularly in House Appropriations and the Finance. Those staff members have been around for a long time. They have a lot of institutional knowledge. And so, I think you will see some of these new members certainly maybe leaning on that staff more, more than they would have in normal, normal circumstances. The other kind of interesting thing, now that we're at 50-50, most members have never seen the power sharing arrangement, which has been something that they conceivably will have to figure out, except for these sort of 16 members down here, because they did have to do this back in the 90s. So how these other 47-plus members go about doing that will, will certainly be interesting to watch. So stay tuned on that one.
A little bit about the transition. So Governor Northam is obviously preparing his government to be up and running. He has sworn in on January 13th. He's named one of our colleagues, Marianne Radcliffe, to be the Director of his transition. She's joined by Doris Cross Mays, Joni Ivy, and Todd Stottlemyre as co-chairs of the transition team. So far, he has announced a number of Cabinet Secretaries and Chief of Staff. So Carter Mercer is his current Chief of Staff, will be remaining as Chief of Staff as Governor. Aubrey Lane, who's the current Secretary of Transportation, will be moving over to Secretary of Finance. Carlos Hopkins currently serves as the Secretary of Veterans and Defense Affairs under Governor McAuliffe. Shannon Valentine will be serving as the Secretary of Transportation. She is a former member of the House of Delegates from Lynchburg and is a current member of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Matt Strickler, maybe name a number of you recognize, he used to serve as then Senator Northam's Legislative Aid back when he was in the State Senate. He'll serve as Secretary of Natural Resources. Bettina Ring is the current State Forester. And that is something I learned that we did not, I didn't, I learned that we had. I didn't know we had a State Forester. So she's a veteran of the Department of Forestry and will serve as the Secretary of Agriculture and Forestry. And Brian Moran will remain in his current role as Secretary of Public Safety and Homeland Security. We hear that they will be doing Health and Human Resources tomorrow. But there are still a number of their Secretaries, including Education, obviously, which you all care about, that they have yet to, or they are in the final stages of deciding. And, you know, we shouldn't announce it in the coming weeks. Looking ahead to next session, and, and obviously, there's a lot more stuff on the table now that we are likely at 50-50. But it is a budget year, and so the budget will be, I think, one of the driving discussions. The governor did release his budget, proposed budget yesterday. He did include some of the drivers in that budget. Or he did include fully funding Medicaid growth and the inflation increase. He also did fully implement Medicaid expansion and realized about a $400 million savings over the biennium, which he, he did end up spending in a number of different areas, including a 2% salary increase for state employees, state-supported locals, and SOQ-supported positions. So that's about $101 million in the biennium. As Joel mentioned earlier, we've been dinged a little bit by the rating agencies. I've been on a negative outlook because of our use of some one-time dollars in this current budget. And so, both the governor and the General Assembly have decided to set up a reserve fund that is a little, you know, has, they have a little bit more leeway with than the rainy day fund. And his appropriations into that fund bring it to about $400 million, which is like 2% of general fund revenues, which is sort of what their goal was by the end of, of this current biennium. And then obviously, fully funded re-benchmarking. And I'll let, I'll let Joel talk the rest about the, the K-12 stuff. Just a few other sort of policy options. Obviously, restoration of rights and the possible implementation of an automatic restoration of rights is definitely, you know, something that we'll be talking about moving forward. Continued conversation about COPN reform. The decriminalization of marijuana, whether it's just for, for medical purposes or full decriminalization, obviously a, a robust conversation moving forward, especially with Senate Majority Leader, you know, Tommy Norman indicating his support on that issue. You've got the Confederate statues issue and some of the riot management problems that the state has been dealing with and what authority the state has versus what the localities have. So looking at that, and, and, you know, we've already touched on, I think the, the real conversation is gonna be the institutional knowledge. Not only are we all in a new building, but we're looking at a, a very young legislature. And so, you know, people that have very little, any, or almost no elected experience whatsoever. I think the freshman class of 19, two of them have previous elected office experience on the local level. So it is a very fresh new class. And getting them up to speed quickly is going to be a challenge for everybody.
Yeah, and, and making that transition for them from a campaign mentality to a legislative governing mentality. And that, that takes some shifting, and, you know, it will be interesting to see all those things start to pan out. So moving has specifically to some specific K-12 issues. There's a number of things that we have seen over the years that I anticipate that we will see once again over the next General Assembly session. One is virtual Virginia. Yeah, this is, you know, a bill I'm not gonna explain it.
Virginia versus.
I'm sorry, I can't even, I can't even correct. And the other one is the Prelate Choice Savings Count Bill. That's a bill we've seen also for the last couple of years. What is interesting about those two bills in particular is they did make it out of the House, and they did make it out of the Senate, and then both of them were, were vetoed by the governor. But there was a number of Republicans in the House that voted no on both of those bills. And so I think the passage of those bills, even at a 51-49 House, gets a whole lot more here. So I, I don't wanna say they're not gonna make it out of the House, but I think it's, that this can be a significant uphill battle for those to get out of the House. There were a number of Republicans who voted no that actually lost. So, but anyway, there's still, that will still be interesting. Opening is called for Labor Day. We'll see all those bills again. That will be, I expect those bills to get out of the House. That continues to be the one thing that the Senate Majority Leader, Tommy Norman, and the Senate Minority Leader, Minority Leader Dick Sazal agree on is that they both do not like that bill. So I don't expect it to get out of the Senate because the dynamics of the Senate have not changed at all. School discipline, as you all know, and we've talked about significantly, those rules will come back in some shape or form. I think the bill that I expect that we will definitely see is probably the one that would eliminate suspension and expulsion for K through 3. Whether the other ones come back, I don't know. But I think we can definitely expect to see the elementary school one back for the session. And workforce development continues to be an issue. The governor-elect campaigned on workforce development. He's talked a lot about workforce development. Governor McAuliffe put an additional $2 million in his budget for certification for credentialing scholarships to the community college system. So this is gonna be, once again, a, a big focus, not only this year, but I think going ahead because I don't think anyone's thought that we have actually figured out our workforce development programs here in the January. The other issue that we've not seen, but we've certainly talked about all these, is teacher shortage. Teacher shortage is gonna be a primary focus of the General Assembly. I think no matter what, no matter the composition of the House, they're gonna be talking about this a lot because this has gotten a lot of bipartisan support, a lot of bipartisan discussion. We've even seen one bill that was introduced already that would allow for provisional license for military spouses moving into the United States. We've already seen some of these things starting to flow into the system. So there will be a whole lot more before it's all said and done. Dual enrollment is gonna be another focus. But it's gonna be focused in the context of the Virginia Community College System as a whole. There was a J-LARK study that came out back in September that had some, a number of recommendations around the community college system, around dual enrollment, around the transferability of dual enrollment credits to the four-year institutions, all those things. So I expect that we'll see a number of bills, and certainly probably kind of a comprehensive bill, focusing on community college system, dual enrollment, transferability of those credits, all those types of things that will get a lot of attention this year. And as Ross mentioned, and I'll talk about it here a little more in a second, re-benchmarking, a big portion of the budget, roughly $500 million of the governor's introduced budget is, is re-benchmarking. And the Special Education Regional Tuition is something that we're gonna talk about a lot too. The CSA funding went up significantly in the governor's budget. And from what I understand, the primary reason for that has been towards private placement. So that, that is gonna continue to get discussion because it's such a big line item in the budget. We also saw last, I think it was last week, all my views are blending together now. But last week, there was also another J-LARK report that just came out about early education in Virginia. That had a number of recommendations in it around quality, around mixed delivery, around all different types of things. They had about 20 recommendations that came out of that report related to early education. Some of them dealing with voluntary home visiting programs. So some of them were on the DSS side, some of them were on the DOE side. But I think that, that will be something that we'll probably see some legislation on this year as well. Then we still got these work groups that are kind of hanging out there. I don't know what's, I don't know the, the future of these work groups. I don't know if they start to peter out just because some of the individuals who really took leadership and ownership of these work groups are no longer in the General Assembly. So I don't know the fate of those, except that the Future of Education Joint Committee, which is the one that is kind of chaired by Senator Newman, who chairs Senate Ed and Health, and Delegate Steve Landis, who chairs House Education. Those two kind of drive the discussion on that. So I expect that to be around. But in terms of SOL innovation and school readiness and some of the others, I, I don't know whether they continue on sort of in the same format that they will, they had in the past. Here are a couple of highlights, and we are still making our way through the budget. So this is not intended to be a comprehensive list, but just a couple of things I wanted to point out. As I mentioned, re-benchmarking is about $487 million. So that is obviously a big portion of the budget. I think, I was just talking to Farrell before the meeting started. We, we haven't yet run our calculation on it yet. We get a little more money for re-benchmarking. Our LCI went up a little bit. So what that means at the end of the day, I don't think we fully know yet, but we'll look at that. But I will kind of jump ahead a few, a few bullets down. The governor also put in $11.5 million for hold harmless. So with the recognition that a lot of composite indexes went up statewide, they put in a little bit of money that said, if you lost money over re-benchmarking, because that was a possibility, we're gonna hold you harmless for the first year. So you're not gonna lose anything versus what you got last year. I don't know if we're gonna fall in that category or not. I, I don't, I don't think so, but we'll have to wait and see once we do all the calculations on that. You might recall, it might have been seven or eight years ago, right as the housing bubble burst and the Northern Virginia, because the, there's a heavy influence of real estate prices on the composite index when the housing bubble burst, the Northern Virginia, all their composite index came way down. Everyone else's, because it's a, it's a balancing act. Everyone else's went way up, including ours. And the outgoing governor, Tim Kaine, at that point froze the composite indexes. The incoming governor, Bob McDonnell, unfroze the composite indexes and became this whole mess, because then everyone was a loser at that point because it was kind of this odd thing. And they actually ended up doing just this. They put in money at the end of the day to sort of hold everyone harmless, including Northern Virginia. So a little bit of that. As Ross mentioned, there was a salary increase. It starts in the second year, so it's really six months of, of it. It's not a whole lot, but it's about $51.2 million. So that's only the state share of teachers and SOQ-supported positions. They also did something interesting, which was a full-time principal in every elementary school. So they have funded that, which is actually technically an update to the SOQs, because I don't think the SOQs cover that. They also put in $500,000 a year to automate the teacher licensing process. So right now, if, if you've gone through the licensing process, you know it's all done by paper and you have a giant headache. So this will hopefully be, be a positive movement in that direction. And then the PBIS supports, they put in about $500,000 a year for training for that. So I think the kind of a recognition that we gotta do something about suspensions, expulsions, putting some money into training is kind of the direction that they're taking as of right now in the budget. Looking ahead to the calendar, pre-final is already started. So we've already seen the number of bills, as I mentioned yesterday. The governor's budget came out. Couple of weeks here, session will start, which always puts a damper on us for Christmas because it always blew me in the back of your head. January 19th is the last day to introduce bills. So we'll, we'll have a full picture of what's happening up there as of January 19th. February 13th is crossover, so all the House bills that are still alive have to go to the Senate. All the Senate bills that are still alive have to go to the House. And then the projected adjournment date is March 10th. Whether they make it to March 10th and have everything done remains to be seen. The one thing that the General Assembly has to do is they have to pass a budget. So that has to get done. They cannot leave before they pass a budget. So they, no matter what, which I think is always a good thing because it forces everyone to sort of come together, since this is one thing they absolutely have to get done. That was quick, and I appreciate your time, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Under Admin Matters, before we begin, I want to announce that we, we will have a closed session after our formal meeting. But before we do the closed session, we will have an additional workshop immediately following the formal meeting. And it will be about compensation strategies. And so, we weren't sure, because Farrell's been gone, we weren't sure we were gonna have it ready. But it is ready, and so he's ready to talk about some compensation strategies. So I don't know how long it'll be, but I'm sure he's got it all together and we can, we can listen and take it all in.
It's gonna be Mr. Mirror, but we need to get him here to verify our thinking, so.
So, so we'll do that, and then we'll go into closed after that. And, and so, will we need to be in here for the, for the additional workshop? Or do we come again?
Ideally, we would come back down here.
Okay, alright. So we'll come back down here then after the formal meeting. Okay. Going in now to Board Leadership Interest. This is the interest part. We're not nominating tonight. We're just talking about who's interested in Board Leadership starting in January. So who'd like to go first? Joel?
Thank you. I'd like to submit myself for consideration by the Board to serve as Vice Chair for next year. I believe deeply in service, and I deeply believe in our schools. That's why I was attracted to work for the Schools Division in 2006 as a data support specialist and a driving reason why I ran for the School Board in 2012 and 2016. I believe being Vice Chair is another opportunity for service, service to you, my colleagues on the Board. While serving as Vice Chair would be an honor and a privilege, I also view it as a responsibility to work for each of you. I know I'm not a perfect Board Member, and that there's been times where there's been strong disagreements. I can't promise that as a Board Member that I'll be perfect or that there won't be disagreements in the future. But what I can promise is that in Board Leadership, I will serve with an eye toward fairness and inclusion and work to ensure that every member of the Board has the opportunity to be heard and advocate for what they believe. With that, I ask for your confidence and consideration in serving you as your Vice Chair next year.
Any others?
Yes.
Scotty?
It is my pleasure to recommend Dan Edwards as Vice Chair. I'm honored to support him as a candidate for Vice Chair and have no hesitation in recommending him to continue his current role on the Board. Some have been led to believe that he was not willing to serve. I talked with Dan today, quite to the contrary. He's eager and interested in serving us and the public. His past performance has demonstrated outstanding leadership abilities. He and Mrs. Anderson have worked well together for one year, and it is only one year. We really need to give the both of them two years at least. When he has a, one thing I like about Dan, when he has a concern or a question about an issue, he speaks his mind clearly and directly. He gives voice to what others may feel they cannot or will not say. Even though there are pros and cons to issues, he is decisive when one weighs more heavy, one weighs more heavily than the other. He is not indecisive. In other words, he does not vacillate. I appreciate that. Dan always retires professionally. His comments are well thought out and clearly articulated. He gets along well with others, and he takes his responsibilities seriously. And more important, he's personable and easy to work with. And he also keeps calm under pressure. I have never observed him creating pointless drama. We don't need that on the Board. He demonstrates the ability to handle critical situations. His professional skills plus his gifts of perception have gained the trust of parents and their families. Let's face it, children and parents are our clients, and we need to be able to relate to them. And for this reason, I feel he will make, he will continue to make an outstanding contribution to our Board. Also, Dan, with his years of experience, is at ease and comfortable in all diverse and social situations. Let's face it, we all have a PR job. But the Chair and the Vice Chair especially, because they represent us in a lot of situations where we aren't there. So I think that he and Mrs. Anderson exhibit a highly honed social skills and are at ease in a group. in a group of five people or a thousand. So, I'll repeat again, it is my pleasure to recommend Dan Edwards to continue on as a Vice Chair. I'm really satisfied with the Chair and the, the way the Chair and the Vice Chair have carried out our promises to the public this year. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
I may have sent mixed signals. I told Joel all along that I, that I thought he would be a fine Vice Chair, and I still absolutely think that. I was asked today, point blank, "Would you be willing to serve, continue to serve?" And I said, "I'd be willing, but only if," you know, I'm not soliciting it, um, but I'm willing to continue if the majority of the, of the Board wants it. And in the same breath, I'm saying that I think Joel McDonald, uh, can do a good job as well. I think the fact that we're not discussing the Chair leads the obvious question. Mrs. Anderson, can I assume that you are going to seek reelection?
I am seeking reelection.
Just to clarify that. I think most of us assume that, but...
I am seeking reelection. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Riggs?
And I wanted to speak to the Chair. Can I speak to that?
Yes.
About the Chair now?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to, um, reiterate that, um, I think Beth Anderson would be, um, it would be good for her to continue being our Chair for the School Board. She, uh, has the leadership qualities, um, that we need to look for. She has integrity. She has vision. I feel like she's trustful. And she had, she's personable. She has a lot of experience in the school system. I think she's done a very good job. I like the fact when she answers, um, parents when they have questions, she gives them more information, or she answers their questions. It's not like a two-sentence thing, and they, they go away thinking, "My question wasn't answered." I think she's thorough with that. I think that's important. If someone takes the time to write us or to call us and ask us about something they have a concern on, I think it's, it's, we should be answering their questions, and I like that she does that. So, I just wanted to say that I will continue to support Beth. I think she's doing a great job.
Are there any others? Ms. McLeod?
I actually, and I had approached Joel, I haven't spoken to him recently, but I actually approached Joel, um, several months ago about him to consider running for Chairperson. So, I was hoping that's what he was going to say, that he was willing to do. Um, I think he's a fine leader. I think he is absolutely able to work with people of, uh, opposite opinions. If Dan is willing to stay as the Vice Chair, um, I would love it if Joel would consider to go ahead and run for Chair. Although I don't like the look, that on a Board of predominantly women, we would put two men in leadership. But having said that, um, if there is, um, many things throughout the last year or so, I haven't, um, I've tried to be as reasonable as possible. I have tried to bring folks to consensus as po- as much as I possibly can. Um, I've tried to attempt to be the voice of, I'll call it voice of reason. I, I, my first term serving was with Todd Davidson, and there was nobody better than that. And so, I think I try to channel my inner Dr. Davidson as much as I possibly can. I think there is much improvement that can be done in the workability of this group. I believe that Joel could do that, but if Joel is not willing to run for Chairman, then I will throw my hat and ring for the Chairman position.
Anyone else? Okay.
I don't really have a nomination, except that I would, I also support Beth continuing as Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Want to move on with anybody else? Okay. Um, next on the agenda is, um, our schedule of meetings, and I'm gonna pass this down. This is a, a copy. Did you have one? Do you need a copy?
Okay. Well, just to...
Any suggestions? Take a look at it and, um, see if you have any suggestions or comments. If you have an extra one, will you pass it back this way? Thank you. Thank you.
January 9th, our first meeting at the New Year?
Yes, it is. Which is the second Tuesday, as we have changed our meeting, um, schedules. So, in particular, uh, uh, February 6th is a special meeting, and March 6th is a special meeting. Both of those concerning budget.
Just for clarity.
I think it should say at the top, where it says, um, in the recommendation, it should say second and fourth Tuesday, not second and third. That was a, just a oversight, I think. Any other comments?
I just wanted to ask, is January 30th and 31st still our planned retreat? It's not on here, because on the online calendar, but...
Okay. Uh, we are not having a, a retreat this January.
I mean...
You just have some additional time given to you.
Hey, okay, thank you.
I just want to flag that the February 6th meeting is the final day. People will probably be banking their way back and be here hopefully in time for it. But, uh, last day of the NSBA Advocacy Institute in DC.
Since it's a special meeting, it'd be helpful if we get indication of what time. Maybe you could be back, and then we can set that whenever works for you all.
Probably a seven o'clock start or something like that.
What do you all think? How many of you are gonna be up in, in DC for, um... One, two...
Couple of us will have to check the interest.
Yeah. I mean, the train leaves fairly early, I think. No, it doesn't actually, if you go back, does it?
It gets in at 8:30 at night.
Okay. We'll double check.
But we can look at the Newport News option.
Yeah. Just a reminder, the reason for that special meeting is because of the shift in the schedules, and we gotta get the estimate in ease to City Council.
This happened last time too, I remember. We were back in time. We paid it.
Well, it was actually a real meeting now. This is just the estimate and ease.
Right.
So, it actually should be easier to handle.
No.
A six or 6:30 start, or...
Or later.
Yeah. I'll double check times. I haven't looked at it that deeply.
We can confirm a start kind of the next meeting.
We don't need to do an agenda meeting until January on that one, so...
Can you all check your schedules and, and especially Mr. Edwards, if you're taking the train up there, will you check the schedule and see if you can be back?
I think we're both amtrakking.
Yeah.
You're both amtrakking, okay.
I'm driving. I'll be back on time.
Well, maybe I'll be hitchhiking.
Maybe we'll have some hitchhikers for you then. How's that? Any other comments? Be sure to put that on the agenda for questioning next time. Next, we have committee assignments, and, and usually this time of year, I, usually it's because, the reason that's on here is because if we've had elections, we have to make some adjustments. But when we don't have elections, um, unless there's someone who, you know, hasn't happy with, with their committee or whatever, our, our, our main time to, uh, change committee assignments is in July, not, not now. So, this is, I think, pretty much put on here because we just, we normally do it if we've had elections. We've had, we have to make adjustments.
It's in your bylaws to reaffirm in January.
Right. Okay. So...
Yeah. And that may also, obviously, if the leadership positions on the Board change, that may change some of the makeup of the committees.
Right. So, if the, if the leadership positions change and, and you'd like to make some changes, that will be addressed in January, not, not today. We won't, we won't make any changes today. This is just for your information, so that if there is a leadership change in, in January, that the new leadership would have a chance to make those adjustments. Yes?
So, are we saying right now if we have a problem with any of our committee assignments?
My, my, what we've done fast is, my suggestion is, send your i- issues, suggestions, preferences to Diane, and she'll hold them and pass them to the leadership.
Well, it's not changing a committee. It's, for example, um, I would prefer to ha- uh, now have a morning discipline committee because that works better for my schedule. If possible, if someone's willing to switch with me, um, it's, my, my schedule has changed, and a morning session would be, unless our whole committee could switch to morning timeframe. Just throw that out there.
That's a possibility too.
I can make it work if I have to, but morning is better for me.
Okay. One of the things I've noticed about discipline, uh, when I've substituted, is that we've run extremely late.
Yeah.
And so, um, I kind of agree. I'd like to see one of those afternoon committees moved up, a ti- moved the time up, either, either a two o'clock start or even a morning start for one of those committees. And so, I'd like for you all to think about that. I think it, maybe even a morning start might even be better, because that way, if you ran later, uh, I, I, last week I substituted for one of the afternoon meetings, and we were here till seven o'clock, almost seven o'clock.
Yeah. That's, uh, that's the downside of morning, is you wipe the night out of the door.
All right, I'll discuss with some folks.
All right.
I may be able to switch.
Especially now that that's a first and third, and now it's a two and four, and I'd like to keep going Monday.
All right. So, that's something that we'll talk about also in January. Ms. McLeod, you had something?
Excuse me. Ready for me? So, if you each take one of these and pass it, this is kind of a cover note, and then the second sheet is what we'll discuss. So, pro- prior about, I don't know, five, six months ago, um, it was brought to the Board regarding concerns over some ways sole-source contracted this company. And so, with this time, I wanted to bring with better explanation, um, of what we're bringing to you right here. So, I've done kind of a little memo to all of you, um, just saying that, you know, we have received the recent audit findings and concerns from the review from the last few months with the inconsistencies in policies and non-compliance with policies and procedures. And subsequently, Dr. Spence has responded as well as some of the senior staff, and I think we can all be agreeable that the, the response has been appropriate, and we appreciate the current process and policies are being reviewed, they're being communicated to senior staff, the principals and all, and potentially updated to ensure legal guidelines are being followed, as well as for better efficiency in the division. However, as we continue to have citizens that come to speak to us regarding disparity study, and, and we serve in a climate where transparency continues to be, um, brought to our attention and the importance of, and it's our responsibility for oversight of the taxpayers' dollar, I'm sus- sus- excuse me, I'm submitting the following requests, along with Carolyn and, and Vicki's support, and would appreciate anyone else's support as well. The first one, and I have attached and would have ready for Kami today, is a, a request for a legal opinion. It is that, so that's the second sheet. And I wanted to kind of explain the why. This isn't a loosey-goosey, um, you know, trying to throw somebody under the bus, that kind of a thing. It's, it's, we really want to have a better understanding. So, um, the legal opinion is regarding sole-source contracts, and our reason for the request is to ensure that no violations of the Virginia Public Procurement Act were made, and that we can move forward with confidence. So, I pasted in there for you, the Virginia Public Procurement Act. And I highlighted the section that brings concern, excuse me, concern. It's, you know, we want to make sure that things are being done with avoidance of impropriety or the appearance of impropriety, and that all qualified vendors have access to public business, and that no offer can be arbitrarily or capriciously excluded. The second request we have on this is, we would very much, and that's one of our things to discuss tonight, is to have a workshop on this. We need to better understand the process and what we're doing. So, Madam Chair, that is our request. The, the, um, support document here that's put together, um, it explains that we're asking Ms. Lanetti for a legal opinion. We've provided, um, three examples of sole-source contracts here. And it shows, some of the things it shows is that it was, you know, the date that it was submitted, amount to was submitted, but then it also starts showing that the dates that some of the contracts, like, actually put in action, the, the work started being done before things were actually approved. And that brings great, because we want to make sure that it doesn't have the appearance of impropriety. So, that's why we're asked. We gave three opportunities here. I mean, there were cases actually that the, um, the sole source was disapproved, but the work had already begun, and then it was approved after the case. So, we are asking for these three. We picked three randomly. They're all on our, we got them from the school website. Everything's there. Anybody can go look at the, the contracts. We picked three that we would like to be reviewed and to feel confident that, um, that we are following this process correctly. So, um, the five questions are on the back, is, you know, have any of these policies that we've done been violated? Have we violated in any way the Virginia Public Procurement Act? Specifically, but I'm limited to C, which Section C is what I've put, pasted in here for you in the letter portion, all right? As well as E, which was upon determination, writing that there is only one source practically available for which it is to be procured. We want to make sure that we're, we're following that portion. I feel like the review we're doing on the process is good, but it didn't address sole-source specifically. And so, if we find anything, then what are the next steps required by all of us, the eleven of us around this table? And, and what is our liability if we don't make sure things are put into place? So, it'll be, I, you know, for Kami to go and provide that to us, as well as to ask, please, to have a workshop. And I do have a, um, not on this, but an additional part, um, where we ask for how we might, um, you know, Dr. Spence, you asked budget-wise some things that we needed. This Board rotates people on and off. And so, I think it would be important, if you have a four-year term, if every, every four years, we went and had, um, that one year we got a lesson in sole-source, and the next year we got a lesson, and you just kind of take the budget and chunk it out and explain chunks of the budget to folks, I think it'd be really helpful. If you come up with a four-year rotation, then that means over the course of four years, you're gonna learn about everything that you're dealing with in the budget process. And then, as people rotate on, no matter when they rotate, every two years, if it doesn't repeat, you know, until every four years, then that means everyone is eventually gonna have all of those kind of sessions, you know, that one-on-one kind of, and the parts of the budget. So, it would be, because we can't read, um, in the viewing public phone like this, I mean, we don't read every single solitary line of the budget when we're going through it. But you were asking, what do we want to know? So, you know, I think right now this year, I think this is pretty clear, we're gonna want to talk about this in the budget process better. And so, I think that may be one, um, one way to do this. But I at least wanted to add, request a workshop on sole-source contracts. So, Madam Chair, that is, um, our request. If anyone else would like to join in and agree with this, feel free. I'm gonna give this information to Kami as well.
Okay. I appreciate you bringing this forward. And, um, I do know that Administration has started proceedings to, uh, make some changes already in this regard. So, Dr. Spence, if you want to speak to that now, or you want to wait, um, it's up to you.
Well, I mean, what we, what we've responded to are really some of the specific findings in the audit report. I think these are legitimate questions. I, I look forward to having a conversation with you all about that and with Kami.
Okay. All right. Mr. Edwards?
The, uh, the legal opinion would, uh, appropriately require a vote by the Board.
No, it doesn't.
And, um... This is kind of a... I didn't have any heads up on this. I'm not sure who, who at the table here did. And I'm not really comfortable voting on it tonight.
It doesn't require a vote. We just simply asked the, the Chair to go and submit its, uh, ask if his advocacy stays.
I believe there's a requirement for the Board to agree to it.
Yeah. Your Chair has to submit it.
Well, I suspect the Chair would probably want to know how the Board felt.
Right.
What you could do is, if the Board, if you want to get this decided, if you want to expand it or change the nature or any more value, I think that's appropriate for the Board to say, "Yes, we agree," or, you know, "But we'd like to do a couple of other things on that." I haven't looked at all this to tell you everything that's in there. I don't know if you all need to work that. If you want many expanded, that's the thing that we on wants to announce to you.
Okay. So, um, so I will read this and go over it, and I, I may even be calling you and talking with you more about it.
Thank you.
And, um... And our next meeting, I may be chair and I may not, so...
Whoever the chair.
Whoever the chair is at that point in time can come before this board and we'll just do a straw poll to see how many people would like us to move forward with this. Is that all right with you?
No, not really, but... Well, I've read the policies and the bylaws state that a legal opinion should be submitted through the school board chair, but it does not say that the school board chair has to approve it.
Right.
Says the chairman shall forward the request.
Shall forward.
Right, right. It does say that.
So you're going to forward it. So you're going to forward it because it's a shall.
Okay, I'll shall forward, but however, I shall forward it. But I would like to read it thoroughly.
That's why we brought it for everybody.
We've got six.
It's a little different.
And not like Dr. Spence. I mean, it's a good conversation because, you know, this started six months ago with some questions. So we, as we're responsible, we've got a fiduciary responsibility and we need to know and protect ourselves and protect our staff and everything.
I agree, okay. Ms. Riggs?
And I just felt it's prudent to mention, since it's germane to this topic, that at the last policy meeting, there was a green light given to proceed with the revised sole source policy, quite expanded. And it's been in the works for many months and that'll be up on SharePoint very shortly for everybody. And that was as much driven by staff request as school board request. That is true.
It was.
Well, in response to the legal opinion, that was previously requested, quite frankly, around sole source. I mean, this isn't the first time that request has been made, so.
So I won't drag my feet on this, but I will talk with you about it further.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then the last thing on our... It has to do with standing rules, whether we need to reaffirm them or change them or do we have any suggestions, our standing rules? Do I have a copy of that? Quarterly forecast. I don't know if we're going to have time to do that. We might have to do that afterwards. Here's a copy of the standing rule. I know I had a copy. There's enough on that side.
Here, I have it.
I mean, for the most part, it has to do with the format of our meetings and how they're run. So I know we made an adjustment a couple of years ago with one part of our meeting, which I've been very happy with, way to change the way it's gone now. But if anybody has any suggestions, Ms. Manning?
I believe we had some folks speak with us about the time that citizens are allowed to speak on certain topics. Right now, it looks like a citizen can only speak for three minutes on any agenda item. And I believe the way council does it is they can speak for three minutes on each agenda item. So I would like the board to consider perhaps that option of having citizens speak on each agenda item for three minutes, if they wish.
Ms. Manning, the way city council does it is as an agenda item comes up, you speak.
Yes, yeah, and that's right.
So are you talking about three minutes, right, for everybody at one time or as each item comes up?
Either way. I'm open. The board would want to do that.
Any comments? Any other comments?
I did, when this came up, I don't know, a while ago, I did call several city council people and ask them how they did it. Because I said, wouldn't that like take forever? But they said no, so, you know. Because at once you think, gosh, we're going to have so many speakers, but, you know. And it is as they come, which I think is kind of a good idea because it kind of flows. Like you're not talking about item, you know, 13J at the first. You're talking about 13J when 13J comes up. So I kind of like it to speak as they come up. I think it flows better for us to get the input and for the speakers. But I did ask that question. The three or four that I talked to from city council liked it and said it was not overburdening for anybody.
So if we make changes to our standing rules, is it... We wouldn't vote tonight on it. We would have it written up and then vote next time, right?
Right, you need... The bylaw change, you need two thirds.
Right, okay, two thirds of it, okay.
Well, I would think you'd present it first, discuss it, and then...
Right, so probably would come...
Move it that fast.
We've been... Last time we did bylaw change, now bylaw change, we took it to PRC first. It was about a year and a half ago, so I didn't really want to go back to the PRC. They're better suited to knock out large language changes and they're just monitoring things that we need to do, but we have to go back to PRC.
All right, so... So again, thank you for your comments and we will take it under consideration and ask our PRC to take a look and see if they recommend any changes.
Were there other changes here other than the dates and everything?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
But it says here, standing rules may be suspended or amended by a majority vote without notice, so that's just what it says here.
That's important in case there's a logical reason to adjust our... On any given night, you know, that's...
So again, though, I don't think it's something that we would handle tonight.
Right, right.
Consider. Yeah, just consideration.
So we have three minutes before we're supposed to be in room 113. So that also leaves us, though, with our quarterly forecast. Can we do that in three minutes?
Well, I think we can, although we're going to have to try to make one adjustment. Let's go this way. I mean, we certainly can take it. I mean, it doesn't stand in stone, as you all know. And we've put down...
It will come around that way.
I'll be all right.
It's okay.
Or not.
So, I mean, we can make this very short. The workshop, I mean, the format is workshops to the left, information in the middle, action and consent to the right, and then information's based on what we know we're going to bring. Obviously, that changes sometimes depending on what's happening. As far as the workshop stuff goes, that's just based on conversations that we have had in the past about things that you all would like to see. Most of this quarter, obviously, revolves around budget development. So most of the workshops will be around budget development. I will have to get back to you regarding your requests, actually, about a sole source workshop during this quarter only because I got to find where to squeeze it in. So we'll get back to you on that and if we have a recommended date for that, I'll let you know when that is. I mean, I think that would be the only change right now, but otherwise the workshops are pretty tight. But any questions about that? Certainly have a answer.
Any questions, comments?
On the workshop on class rank, are we looking at moving something forward, potentially forward in policy there?
Well, the plan for that particular workshop, and you'll see there's actually two workshops on class rank. There's one in February and then, excuse me, January and another one in March. The first one would be to talk to you about the conversations that we've had internally and then what we think we would... Well, we would like to recommend what we think about that. And then we would propose some questions that we would be talking to the community about, getting some feedback from the community on. And then the one bringing back to you in March would be, here's what the community said. Based on that, here's what we think about what we told you before. And then we would be asking for some action on part of the board with the hopes of getting it in place for a transition with the rising ninth grade class.
Manning?
I see that School G is on here on February the 27th. I don't know if that's something that's going to be requested in our next year's budget. If it is, I would kind of like to see that sooner rather than later so we have some time to review that.
It's currently in the operating budget.
It's already in there.
Yeah. We've been shifting gears. Yeah, it's in this operating budget.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Edwards?
There are a couple restrictions that are buried. And I'll say buried. There are bylaws regarding public comment. And I honestly, even though I chaired the board for a long time, I didn't even know they were in there until they were pointed out to me. They've never been invoked. And next quarter, when it fits on the agenda, I will get it out. What I'd suggest is a preliminary look at a workshop in owner-admin matters and then referral through the policy committee because it would be a bylaw change. But they are silly things that I just... And when they hit me, when a group hit me with it like, you know, you guys don't want to hear from us, blah, blah, blah. I said, oh, my gosh, really? I mean, because we've never invoked it. We've never done those things. And it's like, so... And part of it is paper copies that we really don't need. It's some things like that.
And one of them is item B under public participation. Humiliative remarks, but we'll talk about that.
Yeah, as I say, I'll bring the suggested changes to an admin matters and give it a quick look and send it to committee and get it done, hopefully pushed to right. Because I don't want people out there misreading. We do want to hear from the public. And if there are stated barriers that have never been used, then the stated barriers ought to go away and if there's any reason to keep them, then I don't think there are.
No, obviously you didn't use them in 17 years. Okay, 18 years. All right, so we will recess and convene on the dais at 6:00.
We should mention, you are hosting a holiday reception in room 113. So while you are recessing, please don't forget that you are hosting a holiday reception in room 113. So please stop there.